Good evening, everyone. Yeah, hi? I will, yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. And before we get started, I'd just like to take this moment to acknowledge that the lands on which we gather is the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish peoples, known today as the Squamalte and Songhees First Nations, that their connections to these lands continue to this day, as well that these meetings should be webcast, hopefully they are, and archived for future use. And for all of you who are here tonight, and thank you all for coming, this is a continuation of a number of strategic planning sessions that we're holding as council. And it's a relatively informal format. As you see, it's a committee of the whole, so we're meeting as committee, not as council. And the intention today is really to look at one of the more complicated aspects of our strategic planning, and that is housing. So for those of you who haven't sort of followed along as we've done these, we've had one in the broadest sense that a committee of the whole in December, just looking at what was the scope of strategic planning that we wanted to cover, i.e. did we want to go back and relook at anything within the official community plan? Or were we fairly satisfied with the high level? We agreed that we wanted to stick essentially within the confines of what the OCP had laid out in terms of its priorities, but that we wanted to set our own unique council mandate for what we wanted to accomplish in this term. And that's been teased out a little bit. So what we've done before we get to our more in-depth kind of all aspects of our strategic plan is to look at a couple of big areas that we seem to have some agreement on needing to tackle. So one of those was our infrastructure, our asset management piece, and that was last Thursday. And in that, staff, engineering staff and finance staff really gave us a run-through of where our current state was. And what that gives us as a council and as a community, hopefully, is a common language, so that we're using the same terms across the board, and the ability to kind of communicate that, and to really set these high-level goals as to what we want to do as a council. So out of that, we set some high-level goals on that front. And then tonight, we're doing the same thing with housing. And so housing is a big issue. We're not here to determine all the housing options we want in Oak Bay. What we're trying to do is to set the framework for what we can agree to as a council going forward. And I've asked on these issues, on the areas of our goals as a council, the intent here is to find a commonality, so find areas that we can all agree to on council, so that as we work through the next four years, we can have vigorous debate about the details, but we're not at odds about the goals that we're trying to set in the course of this term. So with that, I think I'm ready to hand it over to our staff. But before I do that as well, I just want to take a moment and just, for those of you who didn't read or see the newspaper today, we did announce that we have made a choice for our permanent chief administrative officer, and that is our interim chief administrative officer, Ms. Lou Varela. And I just, we're all very thrilled here on council, and response has been very positive from staff. It allows us frankly to continue what has been a very positive six or seven months so far, and move forward in a way that is consistent and very productive. So we're very excited about that, and officially welcome aboard, Ms. Varela. And why don't I hand it to you to give a little framework for this, and then you can pass it on to our planning staff.
Thank you, your worship. And thank you for that selection. I'm honored to be serving as CAO for the District of Oak Bay moving forward. So we do have actually an updated slide from what's on the screen. Based on council's direction at the last meeting, we did add a fifth priority that was linked to sustainability. We have handed those out, and we do have some copies, that I'll be making some additional ones, because we have a larger gallery than anticipated, so we can hand those out. But tonight really is an opportunity for Bruce and Deborah to talk to council about their hopes and expectations for the term going forward, and how you begin to tease apart the puzzle of housing for the District of Oak Bay. So thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Ms. Varela. And for those in the audience, the anticipated piece here is we're going to spend a bit of time just setting some groundwork, so staff are going to walk through some baseline information. So we're all, again, sometimes you hear housing plans, housing strategies, what does that mean? So we're sharing a common language. And then council will take that back, ask questions, tease out some of the things that we would like to accomplish. And the intent here is we're trying to finish this at nine, and we'll allow for about half an hour at the end, so if there's any people from the audience who wish to come forward and speak, add to that conversation, add to that feedback, that's much appreciated. The intent here is to make this as fulsome as possible. This is not the end of our strategic planning process, so this will then inform our final decisions in terms of budget and strategic planning. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Anderson, our Director of Building and Planning.
Thank you very much. And yes, I would just like to introduce myself, Bruce Anderson, and Deborah Jensen here as well. We'll be trying to work our way through the workshop. And thanks very much for all the introductions. There's not much left in terms of introducing this, but I will speak to the slide that's up on the board, and for those that have had a chance to look at the... The one outlined in red is our primary focus tonight, and that is distilled into ensure access to diverse housing options. There's a fuller sort of description of that that I think is probably worth me just reading out loud for the moment, just to get us... Ensure access to diverse housing options within the built environment, which reflects the unique character of Oak Bay's neighborhoods and village centers by reviewing and planning for community needs. So I think that the fullness of that priority is something that we want to keep in mind as we move our way through this workshop. As the mayor indicated, we do have an agenda, but it's an agenda for the workshop, not for housing. All right, that one fell on the floor. So, go, Bruce. Basically, what we would like to do from a staff perspective is give a bit of a housing overview. And I just want to confirm, is the mic working? Because I might just default to the roving microphone here pretty soon. But a housing overview that Deborah Jensen will provide for us, that will look at our, basically, our population and housing stock, look at our policy framework, and also look at impacts that there are with respect to external agencies, sort of our regional, provincial, and federal governments in that context. So with a housing context, then I would return and speak a little bit to the approaches and the tools that we use in terms of, if you will, delivering on housing ambitions for the community. That's something that would follow, as the mayor mentioned, where we would then work with council on trying to tease out the key housing actions from council's perspective, and what success from the perspective of delivering on this housing option priority looks like for council. And following that, we'll then start to sort of roll up our sleeves a little bit with a look at some possible initiatives that might set the stage for our next workshop on the broader piece with respect to strategic initiatives. So that is the outline for the workshop. And we are going to get it done in two hours, apparently, so, thanks, Tim. Just, again, this basically distills the strategic priority, the focus being on obviously looking at access to diverse housing options. I'll just probably keep saying that a little bit as we introduce and go through this. And so with that, I am going to stop talking, turn it over to Deb Jensen, and she will give us this great housing overview. Thank you.
Thank you. So we really want the focus to be on council tonight in the discussion as to how you want to move forward with housing. So we just wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot as to what you currently have in place. The first part of this will be information that's really coming from the 2016 census, and then we'll follow up with some of the key pieces that are coming out of the official community plan. So 2015, the last census was undertaken, the results of that showing that our population is now sitting at 18,094 people. That's up from 18,015 people, 1-5, from the 2011 census. That gives us a total of 7,740 households at 2.3 people per household. Comparison, Victoria's sitting at 2.5 people per household, so actually a little bit higher than what Oak Bay is. Income apportioned to that housing, you've got households that are... There's a category that separates out into households that spend more or less than 30% of their income on housing. Average household income in Oak Bay being at $138,000. For a single household, that's sitting at $59,000. That currently shows then that 14% of owner households are spending more than 30% of their income on housing, and that jumps up to 50% for those people who are renting their households. Just as an FYI, average house price as of December for a single-family home in Oak Bay was at 1.2, and average house price for a condo was at 558,000. This also coming from Stats Canada, so housing types are broken out across the district. At 7,700 households, you can see that the majority of those units are single-family homes at 4,900, followed by apartments, duplexes, and row housing. So the apartments being at 26%, single-family homes being at 63%. So then to jump over to the official community plan, you do have three goals of 13 in the community plan that really are specific to housing. Some of them talking about housing specifically in terms of the built form, some of them speaking to the overall characteristics of neighborhoods, and then the overall built environment as well, so the architecture, your streetscape, and heritage. Falling out of that official community plan are a series of land use designations that affect how housing is built in Oak Bay. You can see from the map on the right-hand side, that is coming straight out of the schedules from the community plan, that speaks to where different housing types should land in Oak Bay. Established neighborhoods, that pale yellow being a significant portion of the land base, followed by uplands, and then some multifamily and mixed use you would see along some of the corridor strips, Oak Bay Avenue and Cadboro Bay Road, for example. So there are, again, a number of different designations that speak to housing. Oak Bay Village, secondary villages, corner commercial, that would be your mixed-use feel. So that's along Oak Bay, for example, where you would see some of the commercial buildings that have apartments above them, or down along Newport Avenue, where you start to see some of the multi-unit residential that flows into the other designation for along Oak Bay Avenue, going from commercial down to the multi-unit residential, so keeping that all within a close proximity. Established neighborhoods, again, you're looking at single-family homes. The designations would all support types like duplexes and triplexes, secondary suites, and then uplands, its own entity being regulated by the Special Powers Act. So there are also, as Lou mentioned in the previous session, almost 200 policies laid out in your official community plan, and 25% of those actually relate to housing in some form. So what we've done here tonight is select six out of those 50-odd policies that really start to focus in on what the direction is from the OCP. So you have policies related to secondary suites, and that is to develop a policy and regulatory framework to permit secondary suites as a form of providing affordable housing in the community. So council's already directed staff to be working on that, and that is currently underway. Infill residential is another policy that comes out from the community plan that talks about considering different forms of infill housing in the neighborhood. And that could be anything from the duplexes and the triplexes, to looking at different ways to consider character home conversions, and then how do we work that into the zoning bylaw? What kinds of guidelines do we put in place to allow that infill to occur? Duplexes is also specifically mentioned to amend the zoning bylaw to allow duplexes in the community. We already know that we have a number of duplexes still in the community, a lot of those dating back prior to the '60s when they were still permitted. We do have one new duplex that was recently constructed at Cadboro Bay Road that underwent a zoning amendment to allow that to actually occur. You also have your Oak Bay villages. There's policies around how we allow for a bit of additional density in the Oak Bay villages to allow for those mixed uses, where you would be bringing additional multifamily units into the area, similar with the multi-unit residential, so that you actually allow for more units to occur close to where your services are. The residents have easier access to services, and it does make better use of the infrastructure that you have in place within those villages. And then the sixth one that I want to point out tonight is that the affordability piece within the OCP. And in that realm, it speaks to preparing an unaffordable housing strategy so that the community can determine how best to provide affordable housing options within the community. So then how does that all relate together? Well, as part of the official community plan and 200 policies laid out within it, how do you implement all of those pieces? Some of those policies are actually ongoing. We're working with them every day, so it's not a specific direction that has a beginning and an end. But there are some that require amendments to policy or zoning or something to put those tools into place to allow for them to occur. Some of those, the 19 items that are contained within your implementation strategy, four of those are specific to housing, and those are the four that you see in front of you on the slide. So how to implement the secondary suites, how to set up urban design plans for the Oak Bay villages, how to provide for infill housing within the community, and how to provide for that affordable housing strategy. And all of those in some way, shape, or form interact with each other, so there's always going to be some overlap between them, but they are very specific directions through that implementation strategy.
There we go, over to Bruce. So the slide that you see up on the screen is really what I'd mentioned earlier about talking about, there are some other levels of government and agencies that are involved in housing and the provision of housing. What I've put up on the screen is something that I just think is helpful for us to understand the whole range of areas of housing that we can be involved in, and that's often referred to as a housing continuum. So on the top of that screen, it's sort of from left to right, it describes social housing, non-market housing, and market housing, and everything from an emergency shelter to homeownership of a single-family dwelling in a community, so the entire range. So different communities are involved in different areas of the continuum. The agencies that I wanted to speak to, particularly the regional, provincial, and federal, for the most part are focused on that sort of social housing, non-market end of the continuum, just so you know. What we've found recently in our experience as planners is that the federal government has now sort of entered into housing in a fairly significant way. And primarily, you may or may not have heard of a national housing strategy that's been brought forward by the federal government, and within that, there's some opportunities and some funding associated with the delivery of primarily affordable housing. So that's a new thing for us and for the federal government to be involved in, you know, in a financial sense with respect to housing. We've always worked with Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation primarily on... Obviously, they have the mortgage piece, but they've primarily been involved in sort of information and advice, and sort of doing studies on different housing types, and how do those work, and how do those function in terms of the built form piece. Provincially, and as I know we're well aware, the BC Housing in the province have also embarked on a fairly significant initiative, something in the order of $6 billion of investments with respect to an expanded program for BC Housing, really geared to the affordable end of the continuum and the non-market and social housing end, which has really always been their focus area. What we also find, though, that the province gives us some legislation that helps us to set targets for housing in our community plans, and provides guidance in terms of how we process development in our communities. That's the Local Government Act principally that guides us as a community with respect to delivery of housing, frankly, and the approval of SEAM. And that includes community plans, zoning bylaws, and new and wonderful housing needs reports. So we have recent legislation that is really intended for communities to understand what they need, and to collect that information and do some analysis, and bring that forward when they're considering policies for housing, or they're trying to determine what it is, in fact, their focus area might be, specific to the community. So it's a community by community, and it's meant to reflect the individual community. So it's kind of a valuable tool. It's something that's typically the basis for any sort of detailed policy direction that you're wanting to move forward on in a community in terms of housing delivery. So we have that recent legislation, and I think we've spoken to council about this before, but there's some funding available to help us conduct SEAM. And on timing, it's really, it can be as soon as we want really to move on something like this, or once regulations are put in place by the province, there's sort of a three-year timeframe where you have to deliver this piece of information. So regionally, I think we know we do have a fairly significant regional function with respect to affordable housing. There is the waving it, waving it, where did it go? There it is, everybody knows. So we do have regionally an affordable housing strategy, recently updated 2018, and that does give some guidance principally, again, around the delivery and the framework setting for affordable housing in our region. We're part of that. We obviously participate in regional activities, and that includes the next item that's on that slide, and that's regional growth strategy. And that's something that communities, municipalities are part of in this region, and we're part of developing the policies. They're really like a broader community plan for the region, if you want to sort of think of what a regional growth strategy is about. It's about managing growth. The community's sort of implementation of that is in part done through this thing that's called the regional context statement. It's something that's in your community plan, and it basically says, "We've looked at the growth strategy, and here are the policies that we think we're going to move on with respect to what is in that strategy." And so I only mention it because, in fact, there is an affordable homeownership portion of our context statement that says, "We'll look at this." And as Ms. Jensen has indicated, our community plan does in fact speak to wanting to meet and deliver on that context statement, so... I think that's government, yeah. It's all about the government. So the next piece that we wanted to speak to is really, it's termed approaches to housing, and maybe we'll just pop up the next slide. But these are, in fact, and what I'd like to do here is just describe generally what these are and how they relate to housing. And then a little bit later, I think, we'll be speaking about the use of these tools. But these are tools that are typically available to us as communities when we're looking at the delivery of housing. And for example, for us, trying to provide access to diverse housing options, these tools all come into play, I think, to sort of achieve something like this. So I'll speak particularly to these, just as, again, really an introduction to what they are. And I'm sure you can guess as we've spoken, the community plan is a good example of a policy document. A policy document, it gives direction, it gives direction for action, but it also, in the context of our community plan, it speaks about where, in a land use designation on a map, we might locate different housing types. And it also then gives some general guidance to the form, and to some extent, the character of that housing type. And a community plan will actually include development permit areas and design guidelines that help us to review actual proposals for development, including housing in the community. So it's a policy level. The interesting thing about the policy level here is that frankly, it guides a lot in the community, and a lot is not the greatest word, but it is guiding currently our strategic priorities, activities in this community. So it's a strong, broad document that has many functions, and it can work its way all the way down to having design guidelines embedded in it for us to review development. So it's the gamut. And, that's not me, is it? And another example, though, of a policy document I think is really important for us to know and think about this evening is something that's referred to as a neighborhood plan or an area plan. I'll speak specifically to an area plan, because it's basically more detailed policy that falls from the community plan, and particularly the land use designations that we see on the map. A more detailed plan, such as an area plan, will set out, if you will, sort of a further breakdown of land use. And for example, in established neighborhoods, you might find a more detailed plan would give you a little bit more guidance on where different uses might be found, rather than generally, we think, "This range of uses should be in this designation in a community plan." The area plan starts to speak a little more detail about that. Another good example, I think, and the one that is really the focus from staff's perspective, is with respect to the villages, and the idea of looking at the villages from an area plan perspective, and looking at policy directions that might help us to look at housing options within the village centers and possibly some corridor areas. So criteria are up, criteria are really basically a subset of a policy document when it comes right down to it. You know, they can be council procedures that set out criteria, for example, for where we might locate certain forms of housing in the community, and then consider rezoning applications to implement that set of criteria. Typically, it's embedded into a community plan, so the criteria you set out are a little bit more detailed direction for implementing, but they can be, if you will, placed into that community plan. So these, in some respects, also reflect a bit of a hierarchy from broad to detailed. And, you know, it's not really clean, though. They do, in fact, sometimes have a little bit more detail in them than you might expect for a higher-level policy document. Guidelines in particular are really about trying to translate the broader directions that you see in the community plan, and really speaking to the, you know, I think about, our most typical is that form and character of development, and we review that specifically, for example, when we see a multifamily or apartment proposal come in. Guidelines really help us to understand how we translate what the community plan and the zoning bylaws say about a development form and scale, and try and work on features that help us to see that housing form, for example, fit into that setting, into that neighborhood, into the community. So they can be really valuable in terms of expressing with pictures, which are worth 1,000 words, I hear that all the time. So there's some real value in a tool, even though it's a guideline. So there's some real value in a tool, even though it's a guideline, it can be really useful when it's framed by regulations. And there's my segue to regulation. Regulation really does tell us what we can do. It is the permission of use of land in the community and it is also the sort of detailed guide of the bulk and mass of anything on property. And so the regulations in a zoning bylaw, for example, really do tell us where that form and how high that form will be on a site. So and it runs across the entire spectrum of land use in the community. Tonight, we're really speaking about housing, so it's really a focus that when we look at our residential zones, there's an entire range of everything from single detached housing on larger lots, all the way to multifamily units, residential apartments and mixed use in our village centers. I think the last one is really if you're into the affordable housing game in a significant way, you're really involved in the delivery of the product of housing. And so I place that up there because there are partnerships that you might engage in if in fact, you say, I would like to seriously move into something other than providing policy and regulation and maybe some criteria and guidance around how we deliver housing, we'd like to look at, are there opportunities for us to be involved in the delivery of housing? It is with partners. It is, in my experience, not been a municipality on its own. We do have a regional housing corporation that does manage housing, so there's an example of, you know, the product and the delivery and the management of same. So those are the tools. I think that's sort of where I'd like to stop, just so you have at least a sense of that range that's available to us and there. I mentioned from general to specific. I wanted to make sure that was clear, from left to right. Okay, good.
Is that back to me then? Is that happening here, Bruce?
I was taking a breath and then I was gonna say, Council Murdock, if you'd like to lead us in the key housing actions section with council and a chance for me to...
Sure.
...be quiet, that'd be great.
No, you don't have to be quiet at all. I, so I think that's just a good framework. Thank you for that. It's much appreciated. I think, yeah, that's fantastic. What, I'm hoping we can kind of just go around the table a little bit. Just, I want to know from council, you know, what does success look like for everybody around this table? Like, so if we're, I'll tell you one of mine. I want to be done. I don't want this to drag over the next, into the next term. I want to have something that we can actually be done with by the end of this term. So I think that would be my framework of what are we trying to accomplish is what can we actually finish this term? And perhaps differentiate, if you think there's something longer term, then let's flag that. But I think for us to have success in this term, we really have to complete a few things. So I'm gonna go around the table here and just ask people and if you don't think of everything at once, I'm happy to go back, but I'll try and spend 15 minutes here maybe and just get a sense of people about where they would sort of see success in terms of housing by the end of this term. Everybody's frantically writing notes, which is probably a good sign, but I need someone to start. Yeah, Council Green.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Anderson. That was really helpful and Ms. Jensen, thank you. I do know your names, I was just... I made a number of notes this afternoon as I read your memo. Thank you very much for that. And I went through the O C P again on the sections pertinent to housing. And having worked on that committee and I see a few of our committee members in the audience tonight, having worked on the O C P review committee, I was refreshing my memory on the housing piece, which was one of the most important discussions we had, both among committee members and with the community at the time. I realized that that O C P now is almost five years old. It expired, I'm sorry, it was adopted. It hasn't expired. It was adopted in June of 2014 and it was the first time in a number of decades that the official community plan had been completely revised. So it was a big milestone for Oak Bay at the time. These are, I'm just gonna ask some questions and just list my concerns. I agree with the mayor that I would like to focus on the delivery aspect of the options that you provided on the slide. But the first thing I think we have to do, and this involves full implementation of the official community plan, is a zoning bylaw review because without the zoning bylaw review, in my opinion, humbly, we have a PC and a Mac computer and they do not talk to each other very well. And so what that's led to in many instances is spot zoning and I don't, you know, I don't think that's a good way to plan a community in terms of housing and commercial planning and other aspects. I want to see some public involvement, some really healthy engaged public involvement in a housing plan. I think that's key and I think that's what people in the community were expecting of us at the time, at least in my experience. And I would like to see a housing vision or plan beyond the broad goals. So I appreciate that we need to get into the weeds on housing. I've been concerned about the rates of demolition of houses in Oak Bay. I learned just recently that one of the few duplexes that we do have is going to be demolished over on Central. And so we're actually losing the housing that we say we really want to try and encourage in some ways. I realize you can't save them all, but we have the potential to encourage renovation, encourage, you know, a different attitude. And what we're building doesn't really comply with, you know, some of the goals we've talked about. We aren't building houses that necessarily, all of them don't respect established neighborhoods. We're not building houses that are affordable. In the case of the duplex, my theory is that where we had two or perhaps four rental potential units, we will end up with two very expensive houses on that same lot. And those are the kinds of issues that I think are concerning to me. And the status of secondary suites, I think that's been referred before and has been an ongoing discussion since I moved to Oak Bay in 2010. That needs survey that you alluded to, I think that's an important piece that we probably have, you know, we need to revisit, even though there was a survey done for the preparation of the O C P, that was five years ago. And I'm pretty sure needs have changed since then because it is in the last five years that we have seen the tremendous escalation in real estate and market prices and building, redevelopment in Oak Bay. And so I was just, I had a question, what's happened in the last five years? I think you've given us a glimpse of what has happened in the last five years, but I would like to fully understand it, perhaps a little better. The heritage conservation piece is one of my concerns. And finally, what are the multifamily proposals that we actually know about at the moment? I could only identify two. One was the proposal for the Oak Bay United Church and the other was the revised Quest proposal, which I don't think it's come to the municipality, but the developer has certainly been reaching out to council members. So those are the only two that I'm aware of at the moment that seem to be on the radar and there may be others. But again, I think we have to really plan multifamily housing well and I think that we really do need some housing options. I know a lot of people are taken with a little cottage that is being built over here on the H R A at the corner of Windsor and Roslyn. The builder says he has had more people come by and say, why aren't we building more of these in Oak Bay? So that's the one-level cottage. And it really is a delightful housing option, but it would not be suitable for a young family, you know, but it certainly would be suitable for people who wish to age in place but don't want to stay in a big home. So there are downsizing issues. There are a number of issues at play and I'm sorry, this is sort of a machine gun of questions and statements, but I just wanted to make sure I captured all the questions that arose as I read your note today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Green. I think it's a little bit, it's somewhat appropriate actually to kind of take this approach. I want to make sure that we're capturing, this is useful, I think also, I would like to get a, as we get on with the meeting, to just tease out sort of where we can find some common goals to work towards. So out of that list, I think we'll end up having to sort of say where we focusing and what does that actually mean in terms of the different steps? So I'm gonna look for Council Patterson.
Where to start on the list is really a bit of a challenge here. Thank you, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Jensen for reviewing those things. I think it's really helpful if we do all get on the same page with the glossary of terms because it can be confusing in itself. Sometimes we're saying one word and the parties conversing are not actually talking about the same topic. So it's nice to have that background and look at it through your lands because that's important. One thing you talked about, perhaps in more depth, is one thing that always comes up in development and that is our official community plan because it is a visionary statement. And it seems that there has been a great deal of time spent at council meetings, both sides of the table, trying to debate what policy ranks over another on applications. And many people have talked about, you know, being able to argue both sides of whatever the discussion is and that's true. So there's work to be done on that. But you know, I also look at all of the other valuable intensive work that has been completed in this community over the last few years that gets put together, gets presented at meetings, we all say, that's great, and then it somehow doesn't get captured into the discussions. So when I looked at it, it started, and kind of put them in alphabetical order, but active transportation strategy, age-friendly action plan, complete streets, floor area ratio, heritage plan from 2013, let me see, what else do we have here? And the urban forest plan. All really good reports and most of them in some way talk about housing or the effect of development, at least in the community. But we haven't found a way to really bring these conversations together and capture them in a kind of a comprehensive way. And I don't know, I don't know how you do that. I don't know how you work with it and probably your department has more thoughts on that because you've seen it before. But how do we capture all of the valuable information that was in those reports that so many committees worked on so that we are actually framing a comprehensive plan for lands on housing? So now that in itself, when I looked at these documents and I started reviewing them again, there's an enormous amount of information there to, you know, to capture and try to frame it into something that's manageable for us. Certainly from my perspective, I think the important things that you raised in your commentary, Mr. Anderson, were policies and that's one thing that we hear a lot about is developing policies and a few that come to mind, I mean, I will go back to, certainly it starts with a policy for your approving officer because they consider the community interest. And then policies for the broader framework, like the development cost charges and the community amenity charges. We hear things about parking bylaw being outdated. So there's a lot of policy kind of pieces that also, I think we have to hammer out so that we can actually utilize them when we're having these discussions. So I think that those are important. I think your conversation on neighborhood or area plans and how we tease that out of this discussion is what perhaps is of most interest to residents of the community because many people will say, oh, I'm not interested in that, until it happens close to home. So really, how we decide what we're going to do to achieve more diverse housing, you have to drill down to those neighborhood plans, so thank you for bringing that up. And then the guidelines to how we get there because guidelines build the regulatory. So you know, I think what this has captured is that there is a lot of work ahead to doing this and, but I think that's where I start at least, all of the information that's in the documents, building the policy and so that we are at least anchoring our thoughts in something that we have useful tools to get it going in the near term, rather than another four years out. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Patterson. Council Zelka.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you so much for the excellent overview and start of the process on our housing strategies. So again, another shotgun approach of a bunch of ideas and see if any of it'll make sense, but I'm sure in the context of things, it'll all make sense at the end. Of course, as we all know, at the back of our O C P, Section Six implementation, we've got that wonderful list of actions, the short-term, medium-term and long-term. I look to that as potential direction. I see there's a number of things in here that we just haven't gotten to on the short-term items. I know we've made some effort to look at a forest strategy and although I haven't seen it implemented yet, some people say it's done. I'm looking forward to seeing that turned into things. I see that there's some movement on secondary suites. I would much rather see that move to maybe more of a medium-term and then the medium-term item, referring to a housing strategy, maybe moved up more into the shorter term. I was very pleased to see the province in some ways force us through their legislation of a housing needs report that, just looking on the website, they sometimes refer to it as a, what was the term for it here? I've just lost it. A housing needs and demand assessment report, which sometimes can lead or be part of a larger housing action plan or strategy. So I'm pleased to see that at least we maybe thought ahead and anticipated the provinces moving in this area, but I definitely would like to see not only the needs assessment to meet legislation, but something that basically helps to lay out where it is that our citizens are asking for and where our citizens would not like to have, for example, secondary suites or heritage conversions or duplexes or student housing. Maybe there's an area that really wants short-term rentals. Maybe there's an area that really doesn't want short-term rentals, Airbnb. You know, I know we have these wonderful options like designated rental zones coming forward with some of the new provincial legislation, assuming of course, the vote goes the right way tomorrow and the government survives and some of these policies are maintained that allow us these additional tools. So anticipating that those tools will become available, we may want to have a designated rental zoning, possibly in these areas that have public lands. I look to maybe, for example, Oak Bay Lodge. Right now, we don't own it. Right now, we don't really control it, but maybe through something like a designated rental zoning, we can actually affect an element of control on something that we may never actually own, but of course, we control the usage of that land. So we can at least have a very strong influence over some of these lands that are already in the public sphere, that I would love to see maintained in the public sphere and then used for the policies that are most appropriate for our community. I recall some rumors of SMU Victoria Campus possibly moving. I don't know, maybe there's other things going on. I don't know whether that's happening or not, but there's potentially pockets of land that are zoned institutional that effectively, if we can keep them in the public sphere, I would not want them translated into a different highest and best use that would only make our housing affordability issue worse. So I'm sure there's some levers that we can exercise there and I would like to see that part of our larger housing strategy. I would even look to the Oak Bay downtown revitalization initiatives that is somewhere in our O C P. At some point, we're gonna have to deal with this where we have, you know, houses we own, we have a downtown that needs work, we've got sidewalks that are in terrible shape, I believe, my opinion, and we know we have some work to do downtown. Potentially, we may want to start looking at some rezoning there to possibly see some additional rentals and additional places for people to live along those main thoroughfares. So definitely, there's lots of work to be done. I do see a lot of it already in many ways laid out. I do also, and I'm very grateful for, the context within which we live in the C R D. So much work has been done. I don't want to say the heavy lifting's been done completely by our fellow towns and cities and districts, but a lot of it has... But a lot of it has, especially in the downtown core with the, um, last, last I saw was a fourteen hundred rental units that are currently being built. And there's probably more on the way from what I understand. You know, Oak Bay has traditionally been a bit of a bedroom community. We don't have a business, uh, business tax base. We have a little bit of a different, uh, unique, uh, um, thing happening here. There are areas that definitely make sense for rental housing and affordable housing, and there's other areas where it just doesn't make any sense. I really can't see affordable housing going into the uplands, for example. I think that's a very easy, 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 uh, thing to, to say on, on that one without having to, um, uh, expect, uh, the, the public to chime in on that one. So all of this, of course, uh, uh, um, being, being rooted in a housing strategy that has a very good public, um, participation and public engagement process to help guide where it's acceptable to the majority and where it's unacceptable. Uh, that's, that's where I would start. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I have three left. Someone has to stick up their hand. Councilor Appleton, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and through you, uh, your worship, thank you to staff for, uh, the work tonight and, uh, and getting us to this point. And, uh, pleased to see so many members of the public come out to, uh, to support us in this process. Um, returning to your comment, your worship about what does success look like? For me, uh, primarily, uh, right off the top, success is really rooted in finishing those things that we feel are important and need to be completed. The secondary suites process needs to be completed, uh, and those standards need to be put in place uh, to, to legalize and implement the secondary suites that we know are already existing in the community and form an important, uh, housing option in our community. Second, uh, related to duplexes and the legalization and the, uh, the creation of appropriate zoning for the duplexes that we already have and creating certainty for those folks that live in duplexes, maybe looking at, uh, the options that they can use for those, uh, for those buildings. And I, and I certainly don't, uh, I don't, I don't agree with the process of, because of the way things are zoned right now, we're losing housing because we're losing duplexes that are two residences in favor of large, single-family houses. So, without that, uh, being taken care of, we're actually losing housing. So this is, um, it's been described before, those two things described as low-hanging fruit. I think of those, I think we need to have those fruit, uh, in short order. Further to that, um, I, as has been mentioned earlier, updating the zoning bylaw to reflect what the OCP prescribes. Um, we do have a somewhat outdated zoning bylaw that doesn't provide the detail and the, uh, the standards that we would expect to properly implement the OCP. Uh, I think that we need that. I think we need a lot more detail about what's, uh, allowable and permissible in certain zones and, uh, avoiding, as has been pointed out before, the issue of spot zoning, consistency with how we approach different types of developments in the, in the areas laid out in the OCP. Um, I do very much support the area planning process. Um, I'm hearing very directly from citizens and from, and from residents that, uh, the OCP, of course, is an aspirational and a policy document, but doesn't provide the granularity that we need to be able to have a discussion about whether or not a given development is appropriate for a certain area. So I believe that the area planning process gets us into that direction. I'm specifically interested in, uh, area plans and, and more specificity around what we might do in our village centers. Uh, when we talk about infill options and when we talk about where we might ha- add housing units or add options for housing that we don't currently have. Uh, the village centers may be a good place to start with that. That's, that's my own personal feeling. What did I want to, sorry, I've made a whole bunch of notes that don't really look very organized on my side. I would really recommend, uh, you, we had a slide off the top that talked about where we're at with our current housing options and how things are laid out currently. Uh, I think that we're all fairly well aware that we're missing, um, of a large number of housing options. Uh, this is often referred to as missing middle housing options, those mid-sized options that allow, uh, our older residents to age in place, stay in the community with something smaller, more compact that allows them to stay here, something that's easier for people starting out. Um, you know, very much in my mind, when we talk about housing options or housing, uh, housing strategy is the provision of additional and diverse housing options in the community. And we just don't have that missing middle option, uh, which is actually extremely needed, uh, in this community right now. So, um, I'd really encourage those types of things to, to work their way into the discussion. And, and I'm really, uh, well, I did just a very quick point in terms of, what does success look like? I'd really like to see our advisory committees and commissions that, that assist council with interpreting the OCP and, and, and assist us with, uh, providing input, uh, providing that extra input beyond what's around this table and what staff give us. It's an extra level of, of expertise and input, activating their, uh, input into, uh, how the housing strategy plays out. And then I will just, I'll, I'll finish with a sort of a general statement that's, that's a strategic or a sort of an overarching, uh, mindset that I carry into consideration of housing, which is to consider very strongly, of course, the, the folks that, that live in the community, uh, providing them options to remain in the community as we have an aging population. But I'm also considering those folks that are, uh, not yet our neighbors, those folks who are going to be coming to live in Oak Bay and what sorts of housing options they need. So I'm considering both the folks that are already here, the folks that want to stay and the folks that might be our neighbors in twenty years.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ruthwick.
Uh, well, so much has been said already and, um, I'm going to start off by saying there's so much to do. Um, some of the things that I really liked from what I heard from the presentation, um, were, um, around, um, the local, uh, local area plan. And I actually went online and looked at this, what Sanich has under there and, and they have a, a really great page on their local area plans and it's so well laid out and, and it just basically says, a local area plan identifies features of the community that are highly valid by citizens and provides policy on how to, uh, protect and enhance them. And it goes on to say how it's part of the official community plan, et cetera. And that's just so much of what, I, I mean, if we could have something like this, this would be fabulous. I would love that. That would be very successful for me. That's probably many, many years down the line. Um, but yeah, to have something finished and done, to have some aspect of our, of our housing strategy finished would be fabulous for me as well. Um, the other thing that I heard you talking about was funding for affordable housing from the federal government. Um, and, uh, but we, uh, just, um, locally, um, for in the C H R D, I think it is, um, we give, I think, is it seventy-five thousand or a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year towards affordable housing? Is that correct? Do we know?
Yeah, I, I, I know we're part of the, the Housing Corporation and the initiative, so I'm, I'm sure we contribute as a municipality.
It'd be interesting to find that out and to see if we can raise that to be giving back a little bit more into that area as well when we're trying to still figure out what are, um, how we're going to fit, put affordability into our plan. Definitely the zoning bylaw review, um, would be at the top of my list as well. And, um, let me see, I think everybody else said everything else. Yeah. So yeah, so zoning bylaw review, local area plan, um, something, some aspect of this finished and, um, and presented and implemented before the end of our term would be fabulous. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that. Everybody else said everything, I think.
Thank you, Councilor Ruthwick.
Short and sweet.
Councilor Ne.
Good. Well, great. Everybody said so much. I can say very little. So, um, and I'll just really speak fairly briefly to, uh, some of the things that I would like to see done in a very sort of, um, concrete way. So, um, one of the issues for me is, um, that we increase our stock of, uh, housing options. Um, I, I, I really think we do need that diversity of housing options to, to support a diverse, um, uh, population here. So I'd like to see that secondary suites program move forward so that we can work with our, 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 our community to define what that program would look like. And, uh, where and how we implement that program. I'd also like to see, um, us deal with the, uh, zoning of duplexes. We, we have, I don't know, eighty or something existing, uh, non-conforming duplexes that are, uh, being run down. Uh, um, owners won't develop them because we don't have, uh, the zoning for them. So as, uh, Councilor Appleton said, we're actually losing that stock as we speak right now. And that concerns me because that does, um, uh, provide, uh, uh, an important existing housing stock. So we need to deal with, with those non-conforming and also how else we may expand, um, that zoning to other parts of the community. And, um, I'd like to see, uh, uh, townhouse development be, um, uh, used in, in certain strategic, um, uh, places in the community because again, that offers another, um, option for housing. Uh, the zoning bylaw obviously needs to be dealt with. Everybody knows that. So how that gets done, I don't know. I leave that to staff, but obviously it needs to be dealt with. And then the, uh, local area planning I really like and the place I would focus on is our village area because we have so many, pending issues. We've got parking that's sitting there. We've got, you know, sidewalks that need to be addressed. We've got our building assets. We've got to figure out where the different buildings are going to go. So, um, and there are of course opportunities for mixed-use development in that village area along the, that corridor. So, um, that would be something I would like to, uh, uh, see focused on. And yes, I, whatever we decide on, we need to begin and finish it in this term.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Ne, and, uh, thank you all for all that input. It was very, uh, helpful to me just to kind of hear everybody's sort of mindset on this. I, I'll just go over a few of mine. Uh, I'll reiterate, we have to get this done. Uh, two, I thought there were some really good points made here. I don't want to reiterate, but things like making sure whatever we're doing, our, um, whatever plan we come up with, we really need to make sure that we're incorporating the work, as, as Councilor Patterson said, in those earlier reports, right? The, the act of transportation, the, uh, the tree protection bylaws that we're sort of in. Thinking of those issues, those, those items that are, that wisdom that's come before and incorporating that. Um, I really feel, uh, that, uh, whether we, it's a local area plan or, or what have you, we, we do need to, to tackle, uh, the housing that we want. And to my mind, this is, this boils down to in terms of a goal, trying to keep this high level. You know, at the end of this term, I think it would be very appropriate that within our community, uh, developers, homeowners and neighbors all have a very good sense of what can and can't be built by them. And, uh, and that gives some, and that there's some certainty for people who are doing, uh, looking at housing options as to what they can and can't do. Uh, what I've seen in the community is that people just don't take on things like duplexes because of the, the requirement for the spot zoning. So I just, I'd like us to get to that point where there is, everybody understands what that looks like, how, how granular in terms of the neighborhood plans or, or broader within the infill, uh, model, I'm, I'm comfortable with. I just want to get to that point where, where those are there. And I think to my, where I, my comfort level is, the OCP has identified, um, obviously there's multifamily that we're going to be looking at in the corridors, but within the infill model, it, it just identifies those housing options that are there, that are, you know, the suites, the townhouses, the duplexes, the character conversions. Um, all of those aspects that are listed there, I, I'm comfortable with those as all laneway houses. Those should all be options that we look at and we consider. And again, depending on the appropriateness of, of their location. And to my mind, success is that we, we do those together so that, uh, there's a balance, right? So we're, we're meeting those needs. I, I, what I loved hearing here was that I think we're all really, uh, joined around the realization that there was a lot of housing options in this community that we just are not meeting. There's all kinds of people who can't leave their large, single-family house because there's no other place to move into. And those are then not being used by families who are looking for a house to move into. And there's that whole piece there of, of housing need. And I, I believe that we just need to determine that. And as long as we're working genuinely to try and address those housing needs, both current and for future people coming, uh, I think we're doing our, our community a great service to that effect. So, um, that's what I'm hoping to get out of this is that we agree on, on the goals and, uh, and can give some direction to staff and then look at, at means of getting to that, that endpoint. But I'm very pleased with all the things that I've heard around this table today. I don't think there's a lot of, uh, dissension, uh, on, on those goals. It's just really a question of where we're going to, uh, what we can do. And I think, uh, it's eight o'clock right now. There was some discussion of having a break. I think really we're sticking for two hours. Does council want to take a break? Are we okay? Just, okay. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Anderson. We're going to keep going. Okay, good. Congratulations, Mr. Anderson. We're going to keep going. Um, we are, uh, we're, so I, the next step of this, and I, I think is just, you, you had another slide, I think, or two after this, just to kind of talk at the, at the high level, uh, of, of where, where do we get to from here and what we maybe be able to tackle? And to council, I'm going to try and keep this conversation so we can try and narrow this down to, to goals to about eight-thirty and then we'll invite people to come forward who want to provide any of their ideas or thoughts on this, um, as we go forward. And again, this is not tying anything down. This is really to kind of help narrow down our, our strategic goals as we, as we finalize that. Cause uh, just for everybody to understand, there's costs attached to doing these things and we're going to consider these as part of our financial planning as well. Uh, so, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Time and, and money. So fantastic. Thank you so much to, to hear that range and to hear it all within basically twenty minutes is, it's pretty val- high value for, for staff, just, just so you know. Uh, one thing that, that as I've gone through and identified the different tools in, in general, uh, hadn't really gone too specifically in terms of what their use is. And, and I, I just wanted to say, what I heard is there's a desire in my view to have, I'm just going to do this. And some people know that's just me. We need a house for our housing actions. And you know, this, this range of what you discussed is, is really this, uh, this, this place where we, we kind of park our ambition and then we look at these approaches to, to try and deliver it. So I, I think in some respects, the, the housing needs and some discussion around the outcome of that and, and, and what we do in fact prioritize in terms of our timing on initiatives will be really helpful for us. Uh, so w- with that, uh, everybody has heard, I think, quite a bit about, uh, these different approaches and the, the desire of, of council uh, across the board in terms of these, the range of them. So what we have done and, uh, we did this beforehand. And I think we almost got some of what you're talking about. So I consider that a win. So do you want to put the next slide? So, uh, I, I think we've heard quite a bit that, that, yeah, there's an opportunity for us to do this housing review and, and to get ourselves, uh, good information and, and where we are and, and clearly identify the, maybe quantify the gaps. Um, so that, that housing needs report and then some little bit of expansion around that is, is something that we think is a good potential initiative for council to consider. So what we have up here are basically a, a number of initiatives that we think fall from the directions that we've identified in the community plan. And then also, I think in some respects, I think they are listening, uh, uh, to what you're saying. It's just a matter of us, us trying to continue to distill this in something manageable that we can then put some thoughts around time and money on and, and see if in fact, these, uh, pieces will deliver what we want. So the, the, the infill housing, uh, item that, that's up there, it's, it really is about speaking to that, that, um, and, and I will, uh, crib on the, the missing middle, but that, that range of possible housing options that are in this sort of, uh, low density under the continuum in terms of, uh, housing scale. And you know, there's a, there's a, a tool here that is, is a combination of, of developing some criteria around perhaps each of those, those types. And then also identifying some, some guidelines and some design elements around that to help us to understand how those fit that will then lead us to, um, do we, uh, modify our regulations, our zoning in order to, to make that happen? So the, the idea be, behind the item that you see under infill housing is to have, uh, a, a bit of a, an enhanced conversation with the community and, and with ourselves about how we, we might actually see fit, uh, to, to put the, the range of housing options that, that the community and council ultimately decides we're going to want to work on and we're going to communicate that to those that come to town and are looking for opportunities to, to bring us some of those housing options. Uh, the, the, the next one is, is, uh, I, I think in some ways, uh, we've heard more clearly what these represent, but I'll just speak to what, what this item up there is, is speaking to, um, not the missing middle, not the, the lower density, but maybe moving a little bit up the, the density chain and looking, um, the community plan speaks to, uh, you could consider expanding some of the areas that you've identified for multifamily residential. Um, you could also look toward your village centers for some opportunities. And I've certainly sort of, um, seen that as a real opportunity for us to also look at village centers. And I, I think one of the council members actually spoke to the items that I wanted to mention and that is you can, you can look at more than simply housing in the context of village centers. And in fact, um, certain levels of density of housing could in fact represent, uh, a rejuvenation opportunity for some portions of the village. And all of those are decided. That area plan allows you to kind of get to the ground, but it, it has quite a breadth in terms of, you can bring guidelines into that. You can bring, um, economic considerations into it. You can bring, uh, what should we? it, you can bring, what should we do with the streetscape? Should there be improvements on our walking, cycling, driving modes as part of that package? So it is, it's a bit more of a package deal, but it does sort of start from this perspective of should we look at housing options and providing for some of those within those locations? And I have to tell you, when I looked at the 1967 general plan, it was part of the community plan process, quite a broad area identified for this community in terms of apartment residential, I think, was the terminology around it. But you can see how we're, we've come down to here and then maybe we consider a little bit of expansion of that as part of this process. So I wanted to speak, affordable housing strategy, we quite purposely have called it an affordable housing strategy. I know Council Patterson mentioned that, that, you know, we need to use the terms, maybe so we all understand the terms we're using. I will tell you that in, in our industry generally, a housing strategy typically means your focus is on affordable housing, affordable housing. And you know, you look to the community plan for guidance in order to develop your objectives and strategies around deliverables in terms of that, more of that non-market and social end of the continuum. So when we talk about housing strategy, I think I'm hearing that we need to be strategic about our approach to housing. And you know, what we want to call it in terms of the guidance that we use to go forward and look at some of these more detailed implementation. I mean, we can, we can cook that up for you if you like, or we don't really have to call it anything as long as we have some clarity on what we want to deliver, we can then do initiatives here to deliver that. We can set that out. We might have to do some planning to get there, but that's what we do, right? That's why you got us here. Other, I think, actually is zoning bylaw update, now that I look on the screen. We did put that up for an opportunity to also have council suggest some more. We heard some more in terms of that last round of discussion. And again, I just, not actually jokingly, I think the zoning bylaw update came out quite strongly for some, some folks. And it is on that general to specific, quite specific. It does result from directions that you decide upon. So, and in terms of housing, sorry, I should focus on this, the zoning bylaw update is very much a comprehensive updating of that, that tool. And it needs a lot of work. One outcome would be to help us with housing, but it's also got a lot more going on in terms of opportunities for us to reconsider. So I just put that out there as possibly the question mark could be a zoning bylaw update. But I think I'd maybe turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, in terms of maybe thoughts on what's up there. I'm mindful as well about the comments about even what's on the screen there is quite a bit of work. And so mindful of wanting to get it done and so in a term. And maybe perhaps think about that while you're looking at this. I can tell you that there's some ability for us to do things simultaneously to move things along. So it's not this, then this, then this. We can be working on a secondary suite study, we can do a housing review, we can get started on terms of reference for one of these other initiatives if that's in fact council's wish. But in the scheme of things, there's also many other things that we have on our plate as a department. And I don't know if now is the time to put that slide up or shall we, let's, let's just flash the screen for a moment. No, it didn't work. There we go. Sorry. So you can see there's a few of the initiatives that are, that are in this. This is a draft of a five-year plan and what it might look like and what it might contain. And I just thought I'd put that up because in fact, you can see there's a comprehensive zoning bylaw on there. There's some design guidelines. It's also something we haven't talked about here, but we really do need some good sets of design guidelines for our design panel and for staff to use when we're reviewing development and asking for your consideration of approval. So that's, all of that is up there, including the village plan, the infill housing criterion guidelines in the housing review. That's, gives you a snap of if we did all of this, that's what it would look like. We'd have to certainly put on our training shoes to deliver that. So I think with that, we'll maybe go back, if you don't mind, Deb, to the previous line. Or maybe the previous. Yeah, so perhaps back to you, Mayor, to get some thoughts from council on this.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Anderson. I much appreciate it. I have a couple of, Council Green and then Council Ne and anybody else that wishes to comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you. And thank you, Mr. Anderson, that was helpful. I'm just going to take a really broad approach to the things that I'm thinking about as you're speaking and as others have spoken. And I think we've all raised really, really good information and I thank my colleagues for that. There are some, within the broader goals, there are some low hanging fruit that maybe these are some of the simultaneous projects that might be possible. Obviously, this would take more discussion, but I would like, first of all, my sense of development in Oak Bay over the last, well, since I've moved here in 2010, it has very much been, it felt like, and whether I'm right or wrong about this, that it is developer-driven. It is not community-driven. And that has been a huge concern of mine because I think that's why, in many respects, we're not getting the housing, the kinds of housing types and diversity that we need. As well, I'm aware that Oak Bay only had a qualified planner on staff beginning about three or four years ago. Ms. Jensen, it was four years ago, four years ago. So in one way, Oak Bay has been operating with one hand tied behind its back on planning for housing and housing needs in Oak Bay. The other thing that I would, I would like, I'm always reminded of is that we have four village centers, not just the main South Oak Bay Village Center. And I think some other parts of Oak Bay, for instance, North Oak Bay sometimes feels that it's very much South Oak Bay-driven. So I think when we're looking at village revitalization, we really do need to think about the four villages. Can anyone name the four villages? Anyway, the big village here, and then there's Estevan, Pure Vanilla, and the bottom of Fowl Bay Hill, which is also a village center. So those are the four, four villages that we, we need to be looking at because I think they all have potential, I agree with you, for, for good planning and revitalization. And, and then a neighborhood consultation, consultation model required of developers with exist, to work with existing neighborhoods. I don't think we've done that well as, as a community. I think it's been hit and miss. The best consultation that I'm aware of since moving here was the one on the Clive. The developer in that case worked very closely with the neighborhood over many, many months until she got it right. So I would like us, I think we can set some standards, and this falls out of the mayor's comment about certainty. I think developers need to know what they have to do in order to, you know, to build quality development, but more importantly, to be able to get buy-in from neighborhoods and neighbors. Because I think that is why the tension always occurs, it seems, on controversial developments. So I think developers, I think we need, I think we can be leaders in that area. So those are just my comments and I appreciate what you were saying as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Green. Council Ne, you had?
I had a question through you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for the overview there. What's the difference between the Housing, the Housing Needs Report and the Affordable Housing Strategy? Please.
That is an excellent question because typically, an affordable housing strategy starts with a housing needs assessment or what the province has called now a housing needs report. So it is usually the base line that you then start to develop objectives and strategies for affordable housing in that last item, which is the Affordable Housing Strategy. So the difference is, the Housing Needs Report would form part of the Affordable Housing Strategy. The upside of doing the Housing Needs Report is it also identifies and clarifies the gaps that we have in our community with respect to housing. So it gives us some good guidance in terms of the other items that I've heard council speak to that we want, like to address and what's up on the screen.
Council Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, through you, to the planners. One of the, there's a couple of things that we haven't touched on here, and I hesitated on one of them, but you, since you, you got into the village area and it seems like it's an important aspect of this planning to many of the members of council, I agree with it with the fact that it is very important to us. When I think of that though, I also think of it linking directly to the asset management piece. That is another big one for us on strategic priorities. Because if, if we want to get into some of the larger scale considerations, that's where as a, as a community, and certainly at this council table, I think that we have to have a better handle on, on asset management and the infrastructure in the community and what we are able to make happen if an opportunity comes along. And that's why that asset management piece is so important, so, so that we can determine whether it be through funding through borrowing or however it is managed, that if we can harness opportunities, we actually have planning in place that can harmonize so that we can take advantage of that. I, and another piece that is missing, although Mr. Anderson did touch on it, and that is, I've attended two workshops, one by BC Housing and another one by the CRD on purpose-built rental housing. And Oak Bay does have, for the size of the community, a considerable amount of rental, aging rental stock that, you know, as we, as we move along, that is something that we are going to probably get involved in a discussion also. And in the workshops, certainly the purpose-built rental housing, and I understand that some of the pension funds are starting to get back into the market for that. But you do need, you do need to have good zoning bylaws, you have to have a lot of the regulatory framework, because one thing that will kill the developers, of course, is long delays. They have to, if they're going to deal with places like pension funds, they need to have some surety to being able to move forward with a project. There can't be a lot of delays. So you have, a lot of these pieces have to, have to fit together in advance. But I think that that is a piece that's going to be very interesting for Oak Bay down the road. And the, the units that they were building in those buildings were very different from the, the footprint of the units that they're building in condos. And one of the examples in, in the workshop was Yellow on Yates, which was purpose-built rental, and it was an open book session. So you could see what the prices were, what the profitability was, what the contributions were, the rates of return. So it was very interesting. And when they were just doing the pro forma on that building, they actually put out notices around the neighborhood for expression to see how many people would be interested. They planned a 200-unit building and they had over 2,000 expressions of interest, people that wanted to put their name on a waiting list. So way before they broke ground, they had a long waiting list of people. And in some ways, it wasn't, of course, described as affordable housing, it wasn't subsidized housing, it was very much market rate housing, but still certainly a model that all of the people that moved in came from within the area and really wanted to be able to maybe cash out of houses. So what, it was becoming to them an affordable housing option. So you know, I think that's some, and it's more down the road in the picture, but since we did get into village area plans too, I think that all comes together.
Anybody else here? I think, oh, Council Zalka.
Thank you so much, Chair, through you to staff. So I, I'll just touch on the village area plans. I'm trying to look out a little bit more than, say, five years down the road, maybe a bit further than that. I know we have a demographics issue, everyone does, you know. I don't think it's a big surprise that this boom, bust and echo process is happening. And if we build like crazy, I think there's a concern in 50, 60, 70 years that we'll suddenly have an overstock of houses. And then what are we going to do with all this over, over, overconsumption? And then some may feel that our town is emptying of people. So how do we plan for that? And I certainly would, would ask the, our wonderful planners on staff with their depth of knowledge to see if they can crack that nut. And I'd like to maybe offer an idea to, to look at, at a way of, you know, because I, you know, from an efficiency perspective, efficient and effective, kill two or three or four birds with one stone, deal with a current consumption and deal with future consumption. So with that in mind, and touching on the idea of the four village centers, I'd like to maybe possibly consider a fifth one in the North Henderson area, Henderson and Cedar Hill Cross. There's a rather empty parking lot up there. I think there's some zoning for a possible commercial in that area. There's the Murdoch, little circle thing named after a former Reeve of this fair town of ours. And a lot of possibility in that area. Where, you know, possibly some housing could go in there, maybe even some multi, multi-family housing that could deal with some immediate needs. And then when in 10, 20, 30 years that need trails off, maybe it could then be given over to student housing or some mixed use or something along those lines. But I would certainly like to see us maybe consider, like if we're going to look at a maiden Oak Bay solution, that seems to be an obvious area in that area. And I'm sure the, the North Henderson folks might appreciate having a coffee shop a little bit closer in the process. So I definitely would like to see, while definitely want to see something done in this mandate, I'd also would like to definitely see a longer-term perspective on what this plan is going to look like to make sure that, you know, I wouldn't want to see UVIC take over all of North Henderson, but they, boy, man, they keep growing like crazy. And I know they're going to be building some housing, yay. But maybe we can work with them on a, on a shared solution to, to a shared problem that will deal with our demographics and deal with their demographics and find a balance that can help those on, not just on Frederick Norris, deal with some of the pressures they have up there, but, but also throughout the, throughout the northern, certainly the northern part of Oak Bay. So that's an idea I'd like to throw, throw there as, into the pot. I'm a touch concerned with infill housing. I'm, let me just bring in the second topic. I don't believe our Director of Building and Planning was here four and a half years ago when we had a small infill housing workshop in the, I think it wasn't even in Oak Bay, it was technically in Sanish, unfortunately. And the medium seemed to be the message. It was hard to find it, but man, a lot of Oak Bay people finally found it. And that was the last time I recall people yelling during a meeting, and I would not want to see that again. So if we are going to look at infill housing, it needs to be very carefully handled. And preferably, I'd like to see a local consultant involved. I think it was a person, if I remember correctly, was from Vancouver. And the pronouncements of fourplexes throughout Epworth and Fair Street seem to cause a ripple of concern through the crowd. So definitely some harmony will need to be brought and some, some consideration to bringing that idea forward. Yes, it's all over the OCP, but there's some concern, certainly amongst our electorate in terms of what that actually means. So my third and final point is definition of key terms. In the last term, certainly I kept talking about a housing strategy, and then I kept hearing people obfuscate the term. Oh, it means social housing. Oh, it means affordable housing. Oh, it means housing only for disabled people. Oh, it means this and that. No. I would love to see a housing plan that takes a strategic approach that includes affordable housing, that includes the Housing Needs Report, that includes where is appropriate to do certain things, and basically takes a much larger strategic perspective. Maybe in the end, we'll have to call it a revamp of the OCP. I'm not sure. Because eventually, it's going to look a lot like an OCP if we don't just get to it. So that would, that's, is that, is that it? Yes, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zalka. I do want to have time to get to the public and have some, some input on that. I think I'll just make- Um, I think I'll just make a couple of comments here just sort of because I was listening carefully to everybody's talks here. I'm trying to find some key themes that we can maybe come to. The infill, I think, is a is an interesting one. And I I think, you know, I don't know, there's not a, I don't know, there's a technical term, I'm sure. But there's a certain soul of Oak Bay, a certain feel to it that I think, and that's it's mentioned many times in the O C P. And I think the important guiding principle there is that there are there there are ways of doing new housing options. Within our single-family zones that don't wreck that that soul. And I think that's going to be the goal of this this body to 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 have that as a target. Uh, I think the uh the point raised about the buy-in from neighbors. I I think that's essentially the intent of this whole process to my mind. So on the case-by-case basis, that's true. But again, I think if we can if we can come up with solid guidelines and policies and and a logic to the development that we have. Then we're going to have that buy-in because we're doing it at a at a policy level and not at sort of the oh, it's in my backyard kind of response. And and I think that's what's driving me to want to get to these more concrete pieces is I think that's where we get that buy-in. The, I think that the point is really well made by Councilor Patterson about the the idea that again, we're talking about this asset management. May side effect, the corollary to this is if we if we map out what it is that we're looking at over the next forty, fifty years. And what's what can be built, then that allows us to size, right-size everything. So we're building everything once and not multiple times on that side. Um, and I think uh the 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 point about rentals is a really key one. And I I don't know where down this continuum we're going to get to in this uh in this term. Uh, I feel like we can get very far down into the multifamily, at least to the point where we're just deciding on density and 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 massing. Uh, for those areas and maybe the the detailed plans might have to come in the next term. But I I I think that, uh, you know, the thing that keeps me awake at night a little bit on that is just we do have all this rental and it's aging. And we do need to get some policies in place that protects that. So if we're getting replacement that we're we're not losing all that, what is with quite affordable rental place. And the um, I think the other part of this and 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 Councilor Zelka, I appreciate you raising this. Uh, we have to get a sense from this body as as time goes on. I don't have to decide all tonight, but how open are we to, you know, some innovative things? We have an O C P, but it, you know, you raised the idea of maybe some commercial space up in North Henderson or 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 adding some multifamily and and in different areas. I think that's a question we have to have at this body at some point is to, you know, where that line is is going to be drawn, how how constrained we are going to be. Um, I'm of the mind that we should be fairly open on that piece and uh and not be not be too constrained. But recognizing that that we have to listen to the community on that. So that's my, that's what I've heard here tonight. Try to kick that feed that back of what I've heard at this table. Um, and at this point, yeah, I'd like to just invite people who from the audience to come forward. We have a couple of spaces here of just you just come up one at a time. And uh very similar to the process that we use at all of our Committee of the Holes. Uh, when you come forward, if you can just state your name and your your municipality of residence. Uh, and then just write down your name so we have the proper spelling for the minutes. Um, we would appreciate it. And I'm going to try and keep this to to thirty minutes because we're trying to wrap this up at nine o'clock. And I'll come back to council and we'll do some some wrap-up here. So with that, anybody who wishes to come forward to speak, please, please do so.
Hi, I'm Susan Roundtree. And I our home with my grandparents built our home near the village in nineteen twenty-two. And when I was a girl in the sixties, I saw Oak Bay Avenue. All the houses disappear for high density, whether it was apartment buildings or townhouses. Also, the all the what I call the mansions, um, they were rooming houses. A lot of it was former loggers, older men. And then they would be in the empty bedrooms where the children had already left home. So a lot of these bigger homes had like many, many bedrooms and were guest houses or foreign students. Or or people that were retirement age. Eric read my mind on a couple of things. I wanted to see a fifth village up in the high area near U V I C. And there all the university campuses in North America are going towards senior housing. So that they're want multi-generational campuses where they have their entertainment and their food and their healthcare. Um, and U V I C will be starting to do that, too. I was at U B C over at U B C campus when they started all that. He raised the issue of how do we bring and so did Esther on. We've done a lot of good plans in the last five to ten years. I was on the director uh with Eric on the Community Association of Oak Bay, working on the O C P. All those plans can be overlaid on the G I S system. And that will allow you to see, and I'm talking engineering like from my own work, civil engineering. You can then see where the conflict areas are like. I like the idea of another village and five villages. Because there isn't a lot of canopy. The canopy in around the villages has already been taken down decades ago when those buildings were put in. So rather than doing infill first, you could be rev- revamping or putting new community density. I hate that word, around the villages as you uh revitalize them. And you won't be losing a lot of canopy in the process. Because you want to overlay the forest canopy, you want to overlay all these other the dent, even the sizing of the houses, the ones that have all the seven bedrooms and seven bathrooms. Which they may not be um zoned for all that, but I've seen how they've actually built them. So they have at least three complete separate floors and they can be treated as triplexes without changing the. They got around all the zoning. I've been in them, they're new. Uh, a lot of them don't have basements anymore either. Um, but but they know how to get around the plants. I've been in them. I've asked, I've actually looked at how they've done it. So the zoning won't solve a lot of the problems. So the infill, I'd really like that to be lower down the list. And you can get the density and the sizing of all the houses from the B C assessment. They've got that all on land title if you want to put that as another layer on the on the G I S. And then you can then you can see your hot, your trouble zones and people can say, well, we want to do this over here. Long term, I'm talking really long-term planning. Because I've I've watched the changes in the last, we took over my grandmother's house fifty-three years ago. And I've seen all the high density that's come in here. Mr. Jensen was looking at the water supply, which was my work with the federal government. He resigned, he redesigned that water reservoir and a colleague of mine did the survey on it. To go to a million people in the C R D. And when we came back in nineteen sixty-five, the population around here was somewhere around a hundred thousand. It's it's about three hundred and fifty now. So I don't know how much more Bay can take of another doubling and tripling without going vertical. And Mr. Campbell changed the right, the laws on apartment buildings so there could be at least five floors of wood structure. So our community needs to look at the height of the buildings in the future for the next fifty years. Do we want bo- um like foul bay? If we went all the way, Oak Bay Avenue has been almost fully densified in my adult lifetime. Um, the Estevan hasn't had any much change. They've start, they started densifying around Willow's Elementary and the village there. They have not densified around the one on Foul Bay or above Foul Bay as you mentioned. But the main road left, the main bus route left that hasn't been densified is from the Savon Foods area. And they also densified all around the uh the Baptist housing area. Um, and the affordable housing in there. So the last main bus route we have left right now is from Savon Foods up to U V I C if we want to do another corridor. And my suggestion is for appearance that a lot of these density buildings do not be put right on the road like that Boca development was. They can be behind the communities. They could be around the community centers, the five community centers. We don't have to have stare at corridors of block buildings. It's a residential area we're living in. It's not a not a city. I don't want what we're having downtown in downtown Victoria, the mega-city mind that's going around the globe right now. I so I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you.
You've got the G I S. If you have enough time, you can overlay all the layers and we the public can criticize on good areas and bad areas and where they want to see the changes.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come forward? Has to be somebody else. There we go. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Zink. I live at twenty-two forty-one Brighton Avenue. And I have been the manager of housing for the City of Victoria for about ten years of my employment at the city. And I have been employed in the development of nonprofit housing and had developed over five hundred units. So I'm well aware of what it takes to do that. My comments are, I think it's really important to establish any work on housing by identifying what your principle is. And I'm going to suggest one that is actually coming from the C R D's. Uh, regional housing is strategy, which is build the right supply of housing across the spectrum. So I think every municipality has a responsibility to look at that entire spectrum and ensure that it's being responsive to that. And I have five areas that I think are really critical. And I appreciate Mr. Zelka's comment about the need for a strategic look at housing. Because I think that's exactly what is required, is a housing strategy. And the first step, I agree with uh Mr. Anderson and Ms. Jensen that you need to have a housing needs assessment. You have to know what's out there. You need to know what the gaps are. And you have to know exactly what the public thinks about that. So concurrent with that needs to have, you need to have an education component to your strategy. It's important to find out what your public uh knows. And quite frankly, I don't think that the public in Oak Bay has got a very good understanding of what the spectrum of housing is. And I think that really needs to be addressed. And yes, it comes with a lot of arrows in your back. I have scars from the arrows. But you know what? It's really critical. You have to be able to go out there and talk to people. You have to create a community of understanding and it has to be done in a non-confrontational way. Because it's not, you know, it's really all about ensuring that we have a sustainable community and that we're going to make it sustainable for all people. The three components of that strategy, I think, are increasing supply, especially for low and moderate income people. You want a diverse community and a sustainable community. It can't just be high income. I think we need to have, we need to be looking at the diversity of housing types, tenures and prices. And that really does also need to look at the preservation of your existing rental stock. Because if you don't have that component to it, you're really uh not going to be managing your assets. And that's what those those apartment buildings are. And then I think it's really critical then to look at the regulatory regime, the zoning bylaw. And I think there's one area that's missing in our community, in our regulatory regime, and that is development permit areas. Because while they are critical, as well as the urban design guidelines. We don't have development permit areas that really look at ensuring that our single-family dwelling areas. Protect their form and character and our urban canopy, which has been identified in the urban forest strategy. And that's it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zink. Appreciate it. If anybody else wants to come forward, you can just sit in the chair beside and uh you can kick off and then we can write your name after. Do a little hot seat here to move around.
Oh, this one. Uh, Diana Butler at twenty-one forty-nine Granite Street. I was really pleased to hear what Wendy had to say. One of the projects I last worked on before I retired, actually, was a housing needs study with Wendy. Housing Needs and Demand Study for the, I think it's called the City of Golden. And what she said, I think, is really important. I think she's laid out some really good steps and priorities for council. I actually came here tonight um to talk about uh the missing middle. Because I've lived in this municipality now for over forty years in the same house. And um, there are some real gaps in terms of the housing stock. I am really pleased that you are doing this. I think it's really, really important that this municipality starts to look at what's here, what isn't here. And how we how you can achieve ensuring that what isn't here that we need, it will get in place. And you know, there are many ways to improve access and diversity. Multi-story buildings are not the only way. And I would argue in a community like Oak Bay, not necessarily the most desirable way in many parts of the municipality. And especially in our well-established and mature neighborhoods. Another approach, and you've all mentioned it, I think, tonight, now being taken by municipalities across North America. Is to address what's called the missing middle. And Oak Bay should be a prime candidate for this approach. As you know, the range of housing choices in Oak Bay is limited. Apart from multi-story housing complexes, seniors have few options when they want to downsize. Younger people and families have scarce affordable rental and ownership options. And you can improve housing choice by providing for duplexes, triplexes, mansion apartments, live-work units, carriage houses, townhouses, courtyard apartments. And secondary suites, and I'm sure there's some other options as well. There are real benefits to making sure that you have this in a municipality. They are in sympathy with the views of Oak Bay residents expressed in the O C P survey. So I think I want to encourage you to go back and look at what that survey says. Because although it's five years ago, that's not really a long time. And I think they're probably, the views are pretty valid still. They increase the supply and choice of housing. They encourage sensitive integration and blending into existing neighborhoods, which I think is a key issue in this municipality. I'll just warn you about your fifth um village center. You, some of you don't have the long history that I have. One of the longest public hearings I was ever at took place on that site that you're talking about up on Cedar Hill Cross. Fierce opposition, so you will get the slings and the arrows. So just uh that's to be expected, I guess, but you need to be prepared. These housing forms allow for traditional neighborhood design that can provide a transition zone. Uh, between single-family detached areas and high-density residential or mixed-use areas. One of the really good examples of that in this municipality is Rowan Oaks Townhouses on Granite Street. You get higher density on Oak Bay Avenue. You you get a transition to a medium density uh with Rowan Oaks and then you get the single detached across the street. And you know, that was, I was, I I lived on that street when that was all happening in about nineteen eighty-five. And I can tell you that it was a very deliberate policy by the council of the day. Because somebody had actually proposed a four-story apartment building on the north side of Granite. And they turned it down. They said, that's inappropriate. O C P after O C P talks about the need for transitional zoning between higher and lower density areas. And you've got a really good example in this municipality. And the residents of Granite Street at the time did not object to that. So it was a win-win in that case. These kinds of housing increase density at a livable scale without negatively affecting neighboring properties. So their pri- issues of privacy and shadowing don't occur as frequently. They improve affordability for both homeowners and renters. And they generate enough density. I mean, this is a way to do gentle densification of your municipality to support transit and locally-serving commercial amenities. So I would urge you to consider including, and it sounds like you're going to do it hopefully. Uh, the missing middle is a key approach in ensuring diverse housing options. I I just want to, I don't want to take too long, but I, a number of issues were raised tonight. And I really think, I really would like to see the zoning bylaw brought into conformity with the um O C P as you're required to do. I would like to see um a housing needs and assessment study undertaken. And then hopefully, over time, develop as part of the first step in developing a housing strategy. Of which affordable housing would be a component, but not the only component. I would like um really to see the the development permit guidelines, particularly in terms of form-form and character. And design guidelines uh much better developed. Actually, I think under the community charter, you are permitted to develop infill design guidelines. And that hasn't happened in this municipality. I don't know why, but it hasn't. But there's an opportunity there to do something. Because I think one of the complaints I hear most often from people in Oak Bay. Is that we get all this infill housing, new houses going in, but not necessarily with any concession to the existing neighborhood that surrounds them. And people, you hear complaints constantly about that. So I think I'll leave it at that, but I'm really pleased to see that you are doing this. I really appreciate that you have a sense of urgency that as much as possible can be done in the next four years. And I applaud you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward at this time?
John Armitage. Sorry, you get a repeat dose of me. Many fine comments, some very, very expensive brain power being applied to this important subject. I've got sort of three themes I want to touch on, they're all interlinked. One is professionally, sorry, I didn't know that I'm a resident of Oak Bay. Professionally, I get asked all the time by people who many times have lived in Oak Bay longer than I have, and that's only twenty-five years. And they say the following question: We have a large lot with a small house on it. Many of the houses are small. Many of the houses are built in the thirties or the fifties. That's small. Can't we just put a cottage in the back? And if I were in Victoria, I could do that tomorrow. So that seems like an eminently doable garden suite notion. That and secondary suites are slam dunks in our neighboring municipalities. We don't have to do any research. We don't have to into how it's regulated, and our neighbors have done the heavy lifting for us. Interrelated to that is, we are not an island. Oak Bay is not the shape that it's shown on the maps that are in the OCP. We are part of a continuum from especially the city of Victoria to the west. Prior to it being colonial farms, it was a village along the coast. I'm not sure of the numbers, but something like, I think, the third, the population that Oak Bay is now, something like that, immense number of people living along the coast of Oak Bay, what we now call Oak Bay. Oak Bay is not a street. It's a topographic geographical feature. And so related to this is transportation. Geography and transportation have a much larger influence on our town planning and our form of settlement than we perhaps recognize. So that, in those days, the transportation was from the water. Part of the magic of Oak Bay, that people recognize when they first come here, is that relationship. Then we forget about it when we live here and when we design for here. We get fixated on streets and intersections and other forms of transportation. They are valid as well. And guess what? They come from the city of Victoria. So you get an imprint of past decisions that have a lot to do with transportation. South Oak Bay, we all have a mental picture of what that looks like. It's very simple. It's a streetcar neighborhood. There's many like it all over North America, especially the States. You can plot the development of Oak Bay by the epochs, the eras of town planning and the revolutions in thought, many of them retrogressive, that took place. The Uplands is a special case, but it's another, another case of, there's a certain magic that comes from the applied design. The area around Carnarvon Park is another one. And certainly, north of Lansdowne is a special feeling. We think of it now as just, oh, God, jaw-dropping, boring, standard suburb. Yeah, but in the future, we'll look back on it and think differently. So some of them may be worthy of preservation in some sense where they are. Others, like the Carnarvon Park area, the mid-down area, we'll say, could be considered a blank slate for all kinds of innovation and experimentation, almost. It is the target for the Urban Forest Strategy, because there's very few trees, and there's actually large lots. Large lots with nothing special there. Guess what? There's a potential to do something, to make use of an amenity like Carnarvon Park, an underutilized, or under-potentaled, if I can butcher the English language, seed for something. Maybe there's, so there are site-related opportunities for densification or a more community-oriented approach to planning the evolution of our built-form community than just the obvious ones of corridors like Fall Bay. Because in many ways, wouldn't it look, would it look really odd to have one kind of development on the east side of Fall Bay Road and completely the other kind on the west side? That would look a lot like a very artificially-applied planning construct. So I'm going to wrap it up. So related to transportation is, the transportation we all know and understand, and how that has formed our built form today, is motorcar, which is roughly the same age as the municipality of Oak Bay. That's how young it is. Are we now witnessing, as a community, the potential downslope of the motorcar? Which means a transition into another pattern of getting around. The Segway didn't quite do it, but the electrified scooter is creating havoc in municipalities elsewhere in the world. But the point is, you don't need a car to just move one body a short distance, to get to the shops, for example, the school, the library, and the beach. So I'm going to wrap it up. What I encourage you to do through this process is consider that what you're now embarking on is the imprint, the template, for the next hundred years at least. Because we're living with the built imprint of our street form today, that's evolved over a hundred years, but it will continue to be like that for a few hundred more. So in spite of your enthusiasm to get it done in the next three and a half years, actually, maybe there isn't that much of a rush for some things. Some things are no-brainers. Get them done tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Armitage. I just want to give other people the opportunity to talk, so.
So I think we have a responsibility for the perpetual quality of the planet represented in Oak Bay.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Carrie Smart. I live and work in Oak Bay as an architect, and I live at 2144 Quimper. I appreciated the initial message very much of you asking everybody for their vision today. I don't really feel like we've fully come around to that concept. And I would just like to assert about how wonderful it would be going forward if it was through the lens of that vision and something positive and was full of hope, and if we could try to set aside the fear. And I would love to see us going forward with the goal of implementing the OCP as a solid strategy. Because I don't even feel like that really totally came across today. And I echo what John Armitage just said about, like, we can't afford to leave that low-hanging fruit for another four or five years while we study other stuff, because we're going to lose all those duplexes. And there's some strategies that we just can't let sit any longer. We need to have some action alongside the studying.
Does anybody else wish to come forward at this time? All right, I'll bring it back to this table then. And we're not here to solve the world's problems in the evening tonight, but I just guess I would like to just go around the table here before we depart and just get a sense of where people are at. We have from staff sort of laying out those sort of aspects that we can consider here, refer to other things from the audience in terms of some other bits and pieces. I'm going to, if you don't mind, Andrew, or Counselor Appleton, I might put you on the spot again, and we'll just sort of go around this way. And just, it is, on this continuum, is there, are there key things that you really want to kind of make sure that we're including in this? And I think the important thing here is that staff can take away some of the comments that have been made here, maybe trying to still let down into something a bit more, something we can actually talk to, because this is still a little bit abstract. But is there anything sort of, I guess, wrap-up comments would be what I'd be asking for here at this point.
Thank you, worship. I'm very pleased to see the congruity with sort of the larger kernels that we're talking about here coming, and then reflected in what staff have already prepared. So it's great to see that we're sort of on the right general track. I would reiterate sort of what some of the members of the public have said about, you know, not faltering on the things that we already know are achievable and doable. So I really want to reiterate that that's definitely something that's important to me. And I think some, well, I don't want to retread, but some points that have been raised about ensuring the long-term supply of rental housing especially is something that I really appreciate having been brought up. So I would also add my voice to that. In terms of priorities, I really just, I'm very, very keen, as I made clear, you know, that there's the secondary suites and duplex issue that I really feel like we can resolve very, very quickly. I don't want to speak for staff, but I feel like those are things that are, that are something that is, we need to get on with. I do very much concur with the idea of the village planning process having some ancillary benefits that go along with it. You know, benefits to infrastructure, benefits to, you know, commercial availability, those kinds of things. I think it goes beyond housing and into all sorts of other ancillary benefits for the community. So I don't want to, I don't want to beat it to death, but in terms of a closing statement, I would just make a bit of an aspirational, well, two things. Just an aspirational statement that I think we spend a lot of time when we're talking about housing, we spend, you know, the terminology we use is units, and, you know, dwelling units, and how many units is this going to be, and how many, we talk about square footages, and we talk about those kinds of things. But as we talk about housing moving forward, I would encourage us to always keep in mind, and I think the last speaker alluded to this a little bit, which is, it's not a unit, it's actually somebody's home. When we're talking about building housing, we're talking about building homes for people, and whether or not that's families, or whether or not that's folks who are aging. These are all homes for people. So we need to keep that in mind, that irrespective of what its design or square footage or specific layout is, it's a place for somebody to live and to contribute to our community. So that's very important. And I also did want to recognize, just in terms of, and sort of a request of staff and a request to my colleagues, I think that we're aware that this is one opportunity for the public to engage on the subject of housing. It's a far-too-huge subject to cover, as the mayor's alluded to, in this one evening. So I would, I would just like to give my commitment and my hope that there is going to be a fulsome process of continuing to engage the public on discussing housing as we move forward. This isn't the, I think it's been pretty clear that this isn't the endpoint of this discussion. But I'd just like to put that out there for the folks who took the time to attend tonight, that this is not the end of this discussion. But, you know, I hope it's demonstrative of this, counsel. I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but at least from my perspective, you know, our commitment to engaging the public into this conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Counselor Braithwaite.
I'm looking at the time, so I'm going to be very, very short. I'll say absolutely all of your comments. But I also want to really focus in on what Ms. Zink and Ms. Butler were alluding to around the Housing Needs Study. I think that's one of the most important pieces that we're going to need as well, and really looking at that missing middle. I love the bringing up Ms. Butler about the transitional zoning of Rowan Oaks. I think that's very important for us to keep in mind. That seemed to fit very, very well for our community. We need to look at things like that. So that's, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Counselor Green. We're going in decreasing order of speed here, so you're down to about four seconds now, I think.
Oh.
Counselor Green.
I would just like to thank the public in particular, and also the planners and architects in the room that provided some very good professional advice. And I really appreciate it, and because they're my friends, especially Wendy Zink and Diana Butler. But I've spent a lot of time talking with them over the years about housing in Oak Bay, and they've been very helpful, and I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate the other people in the room who have been involved in the housing issue. I see Jan Mears is here, and I see behind her, I can barely see Christine Leach. I mean, there are a number of people that have been involved, Andrew Stinson, of course, and other members of the community. So I know housing is a big issue. I just want to say that I think from an environmental, human, and community point of view, it's one of the most important issues that we face. I agree with Counselor Patterson about the infrastructure piece, and also with Counselor Appleton. And I agree with all of my colleagues and all the comments that have been said here, that these are about homes, and they are about community, and they are about neighborhoods. So these are places where people actually live and relate to one another. So when we think about building, I think we should think about building community and building neighborhoods as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Counselor Nay.
Just very briefly, I really appreciate the input from our very smart and experienced public. I actually, I feel emboldened by what you've shared with us. And I feel like, more or less, we're on the right track here. I appreciate some input that we didn't hear at the council table here around development permit areas for residential areas. I thought that was useful. The emphasis on rental stock. And just the way that the increasing the low and medium housing stock was framed, I appreciate that around, as a way to increase our housing stock using, instead of using multi-res stock to, in Oak Bay, it's, we're well-suited to use alternative kinds of housing stock like, you know, secondary suites, duplexing, lame-way cottage kind of thing. It's suitable. It's a suitable, amenable way to increase that housing stock for that low and moderate income part of our population. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Nay. Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I certainly echo everyone else that has already made their remarks, that very good comments coming from all of the people in the audience tonight. I mean, it's, it's just, we're really blessed to have such knowledgeable people in Oak Bay who are prepared to come forward and really contribute to what we're doing. It's just, it's such valuable information to have. In looking at this and thinking about, if I try to break it down into smaller segments, certainly within the first year, I'm, we have to finish, within the first year, I think, at least the housing needs. And in listening to a couple of the people that spoke tonight, also, really in considering, I think we've always had a bit of a stumbling block, because there's been so much discussion about what do we have, what do we need, what do we want? And so the housing needs and some factual information that goes with that, I think, is very important. Counselor Appleton referred to, we're not building units, we're building homes. I would love that that were the truth. Unfortunately, in the last five years around the area I live in, too many new buildings have been constructed that were homes for no one other than speculators. They were sitting empty. Some of, since the changes to the speculation tax have been remedied, and we're starting to get some occupants in those houses. So it really comes back to that. The housing needs and also some of, what are we getting? How many houses are coming down? What's going up? We built one duplex in Oak Bay. The for-sale sign is still sitting in front of it, almost a year after it was constructed. So are we getting the, you know, and that comes back to key indicators of performance. So are we actually achieving when we are constructing? Are we achieving what our goals really are? And I don't think in all cases we are. So I think the Housing Needs Report is really the key place to start, to build our information, to be able to, if, whether it be secondary suites or any other initiative, that we do have a business plan then to accompany what we're doing. Have some performance indicators that say, we believe we have this many units, we believe we will have this many units, and have a way of following through and tracking to measure if we're actually achieving what we make, we say that we are going to achieve. what we make, we say that we are going to achieve in our statements. So I think the whole tracking mechanism to that is, is important also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Counselor Zelka.
Uh, thank you, Chair. A lot of fascinating ideas here and, uh, I much appreciate, very much appreciate the comments from, uh, from, from our audience. Providing just an incredible depth, uh, reflecting an incredible depth of experience we have, um, in our community. So I wanted to, um, uh, encourage us to, um, maybe return to Oak Bay's roots and be a little more activist. My concern is that lately, we've been a little bit too passive. We've been a little bit too developer-driven. Uh, been a little bit basically just, oh, okay, now that we're fully built out, we'll just sit back and wait until the proposal comes along and then we'll just simply react to it. Um, I, I would like to see us actually pick up and exercise maybe more of the powers that we're actually being given within the local government act, the community charter. Some of them mentioned today, uh, with respect to, for example, uh, design guidelines that could make infill and maybe a little bit more attractive. We have the, uh, ability to re-lay out streets. I noticed that in some of the, uh, some of the archival, uh, images that, that recently came out on Twitter, I, I couldn't believe how many streets used to be coming off of, um, uh, Fowl Bay and, and Cadbro Bay that are gone. They've been replanted or re, 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 uh, re, re, um, redone by the council of the day. We still have that power where we can realign streets and possibly free up some land. I, I do notice many of our streets are incredibly wide. And if we're going to reduce our overall speed down to 40, we probably don't need some of these streets that look like highways, which will only visually encourage people to speed. So there's some possibilities there that we might want to consider. I, I don't know. Um, uh, again, I'm going to look to some of this incredible depth of planning knowledge we have sitting at the table in front of us. But I would like us to possibly, uh, uh, consider being maybe a little bit less passive in terms of what we can, uh, do. I'm sure there's other, uh, other powers that, uh, that are available to us in the local government act that I've not, uh, I've not mentioned yet. Also, um, uh, among the missing middle, um, I'd also like us maybe to consider, uh, or at least, uh, look, look to if we're going to be a little more activist. Maybe there's some cooperative forms of housing ownership. Or maybe there's some housing trusts or land trusts that we could possibly use that could help fill in this missing middle from a financial perspective. We can hope for it to make it aspirational, but how are we going to actually fund this thing? So we need to be a little bit more creative on some of the funding approaches. As opposed to just say, oh, we need it, we need it, we need it. Well, how are we going to actually do it? And we can't always expect another, um, uh, yellow on Yates, Yates. Did I get that right? Which is a char- charter, chart? Chart, chart, uh, development. We, that, we, we can't always rely on, on, on a, on beneficial developers, uh, to come along. We may have to actually pick up the power and do some of it ourselves. So is that the last thing? I think I have one more thing. Yeah, I, I absolutely agree, um, that, uh, the fundamentals of community, the fundamentals of neighborhoods is based on homes. Building communities, building neighborhoods is, is fine, but we really need to, to, to look at the homes. Um, so, uh, if we could be a little more activist, and actually, um, I guess, uh, a funny way of saying it is, uh, you know, we have those nuts out, out front. The coho, uh, maybe, they're rather large. Maybe they're apocryphal. We need to maybe pick up and be a little more on the cojones and, and just take, pick up this power. It's a terrible way of putting it, but you kind of know what I'm trying to get at, uh, in terms of being activist and actually.
It's possible for community as a whole to be too informal, but I just put that there.
Apocryphal, I mean, yes, yes. Anyway, thank you. Anyway, I'll stop it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zelka. So I just, I'll, I'll wrap this up just by saying thank you to all the people who have come out tonight and, and given their input. It is by no means, uh, the end of this. You know, I think the intention here through the, we're trying to change things a little bit in that. Trying to tie, uh, budgeting to our strategic planning, trying to make strategic, and through that allow more public input into that process as well. So this is our first year at it. We're, we're, we're going through this and I, I appreciate the interest that the, the community has in this. Obviously, housing affects all of us, so, uh, no surprise that we have a fairly good piece here. Uh, but I do want to reiterate what I've heard from every counselor, which is that we have a very strong commitment to that public consultation. But also to getting things done. We, we really do want to not let things sit and wait and, and drag on. So, um, you know, any other things I wanted to comment on? Uh, part of that consultation is also with our committees and commissions. And, and we are going to be looking at it, taking a very good look at how we use those. We have so much expertise. We heard a lot of it here tonight. But there's a lot of it on our, in our committees and commissions that are designed to provide that input and help guide some of those processes. So we'll, we'll be, you know, looking at that as part of this as well. And I'll finish on, on where we started at, at Counselor Appleton's on the, on the, on these homes. And I think of that really as, uh, one of the things that really draws people to Oak Bay, I believe, is that we are a very human-scale, very walkable, very, very understandable community. We, we know our neighbors. There's a certain level of, of, of that sense of community, uh, most places you go in Oak Bay. And I think that's the, that's the overarching piece. We want to keep that and still look at ways of, of providing other housing options. That, that maintains that, but, but adds and, and enhances. So I think we're on a very good platform here in terms of, of sharing that. I, I think we're pretty much ready to, to wrap this up. This will be distilled down, I will bring this back. And, uh, I know it's hard to kind of take all those pieces. But Mr. Anderson and Ms. Jensen, I appreciate your time here tonight and your expertise. And certainly, um, when we take this back, my understanding is this will come back sort of with what you started with there. Essentially, looking at work plans and what that might look like, what the cost will be and, and tying it to our broader strategic planning pieces. So we can kind of say, yes, that's what we want to do. And yes, we would agree to those timelines. So that's, that's the hope here. So with that, I guess we just need a motion to adjourn. We would have seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.